Welcome to District 4's Town Hall Meeting entitled "Expanding Our Progress." Let's roll the tape.
We dream big. We are storytellers, industry shakers, and creators at center stage and behind the scenes. We come from all places and we're ready to share L.A.'s passion with the world. We are driven and our ambition deserves a stage. That stage is SoFi Stadium, fueled by SoFi's commitment to help people achieve their dreams.
Philip Rivers, he's got a lot of weapons at his disposal this year.
The new home of the Los Angeles Chargers. World-class events, renowned musical acts, and best of all, Los Angeles? You, our community. Get ready to experience the extraordinary.
Let's get a hand for the future Los Angeles Rams, Los Angeles Clippers, as well as the Los Angeles Chargers. Thank you. You're listening, good. There's been a number of individuals raising concern that that vacant land that we own as a city redevelopment agency, that in fact, it should be used for affordable housing. And over the years, for those who've been on the council, and I've been on the council 16 years, we've watched that land be acquired by the city in order to relocate families that lived in the area because FAA and law was said it falls underneath the flight path and the decimal level of the noise is excessively too high. So, we've reached out to now, wanted to bring in the Clippers with their arena, the business office, as well as their practice stadium. And I want to read a letter that I received, or the mayor received from FAA. And it goes as follows. "The Federal Aviation Administration provided Airport Improvement Program grants to the City of Inglewood to increase compatible land uses with aircraft noise associated with nearby Los Angeles International Airport. Located two miles to the west of the noise impact parcels, these Airport Improvement Program grants require the city to remove residents from the noise impacted parcels, which the city has done, and to ensure future land use compatible with the LAX noise impacts. The city intends to ensure that future compatibility land use of noise impact parcels by developing them for commercial use and excluding residential uses. The FAA does not support the reintroduction of a single-family or multiple-family residential uses on the noise impacted parcels. Such residential redevelopment would increase residents' exposure to aircraft noise and herein, consistently with the intent of the city's land acquisition and noise mitigation program, approved and funded by the FAA." So I wanted everyone to be made aware, this is not Ralph Franklin talking, the mayor Butts talking, this is FAA talking, saying, "We're doing exactly what we were required to do as far as what the money was paid for." So, would you be made aware of that? So, we are looking forward finally, having all that acreage of land, over 18 acres, that has been on the city's payroll and we're not getting any taxes for it, now we're having a developer come, which also will get the taxes to help continue to provide you infrastructure improvements, et cetera, for the city. So, just wanted to be made aware of that. Before I also have my first presenter, I want to also recognize our sponsors. So, please give it up personally for Hollywood Park's Casino, who provided us the venue and the refreshments. Can we get an applause for that? Thank you. So, some of the other presenters are sponsors. Behind me are door prices. You have to be present to get them, and guess when they're going to be given? Very end. So, we're getting, you also received in your tote bags, you should have received metal straws that are recycled, that you can clean, and also flashlight, one or the other, from the Public Works Department. You get one or the other. Southern California Gas Company has provided us with the ballpoint pens that you should receive. Those that have the ballpoint pens are the blue ones with the, at the other end is the yellow highlighter. And then behind me to my right, Southern California Gas provides, provided me with cows. Why would they give me cows? Why would Southern California Gas give cows? Because it's natural gas. And they use the cow chips and they actually create gas, which then is being able to be filtered to be used for your homes. Republic Services, your tote bags came from them as well. We'll be raffling off L.A. Chargers hats and lapel pins. L.A. Rams autographed mini Rams helmets. And West Basin Metropolitan Water District provided us coolers with tote bags, that's tote bags. And then Southern California Edison provided us with tire pressure gauges. So, those are our sponsors. Can we all give them a hand, please? So, if you notice, the theme for today's meeting is "Expanding On Our Progress." Expanding On Our Progress. And before I have the first presenter come in and talk about the hospital, I see that our Senator Bradford has arrived. If he'll come up front, I would appreciate him to make a few comments. Senator Bradford, I want to personally recognize him. He has been very instrumental for the City of Inglewood up in Sacramento. He's been very instrumental on us getting a number of bills passed, so we can move faster on the sequel process for the moving of the Clippers. He's helped me repeatedly for a number of Hollywood Park Casino issues that need to be addressed. And he's also been able to bring the city money from Sacramento to help us work on our streets and other activities. So, I want him to make a brief remarks. If you please come, give it up for Senator Steve Bradford.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Let's give Councilman Franklin a round of applause for convening this meeting over District 4 Town Hall Meeting. It's quite impressive, and even Willie Agee's here, so you know it's a special day. But I'm honored to represent the City of Inglewood and work closely, not only with Councilman Franklin, but his four other colleagues and the mayor, in moving the agenda of the City of Inglewood. And your presence here today shows your commitment to the city and your approval of the leadership that you're receiving from your local government. We just concluded our legislative year last Saturday, September the 14th. You probably saw it on the news, we had a little shenanigans at the last hour. I was the convening officer of the Senate session, and one of our folks wanted to throw something down on the floor and, you know, but anyway, nonetheless, we survived it. Our year is completed. I'm honored to say I introduced 19 bills this year, 12 of which made it to the governor, 2 have been signed so far, so we still have 10 that he has until October 13th to sign. And a lot of it has to do with making sure we have continued education for our formerly incarcerated, allow them to access cow grants, making sure there's diversity in our insurance industry, so women and minority owner, our disabled veterans have an opportunity to do business with insurance companies that are doing hundreds of millions of dollars here in California. And that procurement and contracting opportunity should be just as diverse as the state. The Councilman also spoke to what we're doing with the Rams and the Clippers. I was honored to be the co-author of AB 987, which will build a new Clipper arena here on the corner of Prairie and Century Boulevard, that will open up in 2024. But also, we're working with some language that is still in the bill, that's going to help hopefully the Rams expand what they're doing as well. So, we have a lot of good things happening that is impacting Inglewood, a lot of opportunities that we should all be proud of, and I'm just happy to continue working. If those of you don't know, my office is on the sixth floor of Inglewood City Hall, where it's been for over 40 years, you've had both a senator and an assembly person. When I was in the assembly, my office was right across the hall, so you have access here in the City of Inglewood. It's no excuse why you say you can't reach us, they're there, the city hall is always accessible, and like I said, it's been an honor to work with Councilman Franklin. I'm not going to take any more of your time, but feel free to contact my office, and if you want to see the bills that we introduced, we have a bill package out on the front table, so as you go out, please pick it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Very busy man, multiple cities represent, no sir, that's for the raffle. That's for the raffle. I don't think they would let you out the door with it. So, moving back to our theme, "Expanding Our Progress." Actually, I was approached by a doctor at one of the block club meetings, and they kept saying, "You know what? City is growing and growing and growing, which means there's a population explosion. What efforts, if any, is the city weighing in on, on providing some form of healthcare improvements or other access?" So, I thought it would be only far and fitting that we recognize our key hospital in the City of Inglewood and their major investments that they've been providing over the last several years, and what they're going to continue to provide as we speak. So, please help me recognize Ms. Molly Lawson, the Business Development and Marketing Director of Sentinel Hospital Medical Center, and Ed Lee Atherton, Director of Performance Improvements. Please come right up. Thank you.
I know that in the initial agenda that was sent out by Claudette through Councilman Franklin's office, it said that our CEO Mohammed Nasser was going to be here, and he wanted to be with you all, but he couldn't. So, Ed and I are standing, Ed and I are the stand-in replacements today. But we really appreciate the invitation, Councilman Franklin. He wanted us to come and really give you all kind of a picture of what's been happening at the hospital, some of the changes, improvements that we've made. So, we have a couple of slides to go through, and then we'll have time for questions after that. And Ed, anytime you want to, anytime you want to just chime on in, I'm turning this on so I can turn this. Okay. So, from the beginning, I don't know if there were any centennials in here, or anyone in their 90s, in their 90s, the better? Better? But Sentinel Hospital's been serving this community for almost 100 years. So, when the proposed Clipper Stadium opens in 2024, that will also be our 100th anniversary, so we'll have a lot to celebrate. But the point being is that there have been many iterations of the hospital over the years. It started out as a 24-bed hospital in 1924 and evolved into where it is today. Our parent company, Prime Healthcare, purchased the hospital in 2007, and have, we've been, they've been maintaining and running it since that time. Just a little bit about Prime Healthcare, so you know, we are a 45-hospital system that spans across the country. The majority of the hospitals are based in either Southern California, Texas, or New Jersey, but we are one of 45 hospital systems strong. Our mission is obviously to make sure that we're delivering the most quality compassionate care that we can to our communities on a daily basis. And here's kind of a look at where we are vis-à-vis some of the other hospitals in the area. So, this might be better if I just hold it, but, okay. There are three circles on this slide. They represent miles from the hospital. So, the red circle is a five-mile radius from the hospital. The green circle is a 7.5, and the, and the blue is 10-mile radius from the hospital. But the reason that we want to show you this slide is because Sentinel is currently serving directly a population of potentially 3.4 million, million people in our general service area. And I'm sure you all remember when Daniel Freeman was in the community, and that closed down, and then obviously RFK. So, we know that we're kind of the only game in town, and we've been working really hard to make sure that we're, that we're still instilling the confidence in the community that we can, that we are prepared today to take care of you, and then obviously in the foreseeable future with all the things happening in Inglewood. This is a snapshot of our current stats, just to show you the type of traffic that we have at Sentinel. So, our total discharges last year were over 18,000. ED visits were over 45,000. Our ED admits, so patients that come into our emergency department that are admitted for inpatient services, is, were almost 15,000. We had almost 500 newborn deliveries for 2018, and we did almost 1,700 surgeries. The team at the hospital's been working really hard. Ed is actually the Director of Performance Improvement, so his department is really essential in this process. But we've been really working hard to make sure that we are adhering to the highest quality standards throughout the nation. So, I don't know if, do you want to speak to any of the awards that we've gotten recently? And how, and how they're classified?
Well, sure. One of the most popular reward, award for hospitals have become LeapFrog. You've heard of the LeapFrog Award? And they rate hospitals sort of in a school grade, A, B, C, D, and F. Well, Sentinel has consistently gotten an A grade. Not an F grade, but an A grade. All right. I don't want to, I want to let you know there's a reason why we strive to get an A all the time, because we are there to serve you, the people of Inglewood. And so, we can't give you anything less than the best. And let me, let me just say one other quick thing about awards. CMS, I don't know if you got that in your slide, gives hospitals star ratings. And if you look at UCLA, they got a four-star rating. Cedars, a four-star rating. Well, what do you think we have at Sentinel? A four-star rating. So, if you think they're better than us, think again. We are just as good, and I think we're better, really.
We have to have that level of confidence, right? But there's, there's a lot that goes into actually achieving these awards, a lot of quality metrics that were, that were required to hit in order to be able to state that we got an A consistently. And the, the fall grades are coming out, so we're hopeful that we will get an A again.
I'm not allowed to tell you publicly what those grades are yet. I know what they are, but I can't, I can't tell you what they are. I know what they are, but I'm not allowed to publicly say it. Don't worry, we're good.
All right, we got another A. I like that, I like that. Just a couple of other recent recognitions that we've gotten from Becker's Hospital Review. So, the fifth year in a row, we were named one of the top 100 community hospitals, and that's nationwide. Also, we were, we have been consistently awarded a high-performing hospital by U.S. News and World Report for COPD and heart failure. And also, I failed to mention, Ed is also in charge of our stroke program, so he's obviously very proud about the other two awards that we have.
Absolutely proud of it. And by the way, I know I'm also in charge of the stroke program, but we are ranked number one in the country in heart care. So, you ought to be proud of that.
Thank you. I'm sure you're all familiar, at least with the name of the Tommy Lasorda Heart Institute. He continues to be a patient of ours, and we're proud that he's, that his name is still on the building. So, that's just, just an idea of what we've been doing behind the scenes to make sure that we were, you know, keeping our quality in high marks. So, I quickly wanted to go through just some of the services that we currently offer at the hospital. This slide is just a list of all of our service lines. So, our active service lines, obviously, we have a very robust emergency department. We have an orthopedics service line, the Tommy Lasorda Heart Institute, and we do have a cath lab. We have a new OB unit that opened in December 2018, we're very proud of that. We have a robotics program. Is anybody familiar with robotic assisted surgery? Yeah? Couple people? So, we actually do have a robot, and we have a number of physicians that are doing robotic assisted surgery at the hospital. We have an inpatient acute rehab unit and outpatient rehab services. We have, obviously, we're a designated primary stroke center. We have inpatient wound care and plastics available. So, a couple of our planned service lines, we are, we are opening, hopefully in the next couple of months, a hybrid cath area in our current cath lab. And we're working hard right now with the L.A. County EMS to be re-designated as a STEMI-receiving center. And also, the one thing that we wanted to talk to you really about is, is, is trauma, because we are actively pushing the county to help us be designated a trauma center, which is something that we need in this community. But I thought that Ed would just give us, could you just tell them a little bit about what STEMI is and why that's important to us?
Sure. Now, most of us, and I'm going to say something, I don't want anybody to get offended, they say black folks and Hispanic folks are at highest risk for heart attacks and strokes. Can I tell you, it's not because you're black or Hispanic, it's because of your diet and lifestyle. I thought I'd throw that in there. Loma Linda did a study with all black people, 140,000 of them, and it turns out, based on their diet and lifestyle, they did just as well or better than any other groups. So, it's not because of her ethnicity or race, it's because of her diet and lifestyle. If you got a diet and lifestyle that's not very good, you're going to have a heart attack. That's what a STEMI is. S.T. elevated MI, myocardial infarction. That's what happens when one of the main arteries that feed the blood and oxygen to your heart gets clogged up. And the blood can't pass, so you can't get oxygen. And us men, more than women, tend to ignore the symptoms, which is that tightness, shortness of breath, we start to sweat when there's no reason to sweat, and then we say indigestion, we have a C. Well, let me tell you, the sooner you get to the hospital, the better it is, because we can save you. But if you take too long, then your heart becomes abnormal, the rhythm becomes abnormal. And instead of beating like you come from the Caribbean, you know how folks from the Caribbean walk, and how they like that kind of music that gives rhythm? Your heart comes from the Caribbean. It has rhythm, right? And when the heart beats, it's timing, it's a good timing. It loses timing, and it begins to beat all kind of way. It dance like it come from some other place, not from the Caribbean. And then when it does that, we have to shock you back. But if you get to the hospital in time, we can take you to a cath lab that we are redoing, and we can go in there and do angioplasty and make your heart better. What about trauma? Well, if you got a stab, a gunshot wound, somebody assaulted you on the street, you got into a really bad accident where you suffered severe trauma, right now, we can't help you. We have to send you to UCLA, we have to send you maybe to the Harbor somewhere else. We are here to serve our community, and so we are insisting that we become a trauma center, so that if any of those things happen to you, for example, today, there was an accident with some school students on Manchester, if any of them had been hurt badly, they would have had to have been taken out. Why, when we have a hospital sitting right there, which we will soon have, what, 52 beds in our ER, brand-new ER, if you haven't gone to visit, call my office, my extension is 8482. When you get to the hospital, ask the operator for Ed, and I will take you for a tour, I promise you, all right? Sorry. When we become a trauma center, you will be able to rest well, you'll be able to drive and say, "If I get in an accident, God forbid, at least I know Sentinel is there to take care of me." I don't have to lose time, because time is brain, time is, is tissue, right? Time is you lose your leg if you can't get there on time. If we are a trauma center, and I'm telling you all of this, because I want you to put some pressure on the folks in power to make this happen.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Thank you, Ed. I can tell you that we had some recent meetings, obviously, with Councilman Franklin, the rest of the city council, and Mayor Butts. And we're so thankful that everyone is very much in support of making sure that this happens. We do have to be designated from L.A. County, so they have, they really have the jurisdiction on, on how and where they designate hospitals. So, but we just wanted to make you aware that behind the scenes, we are working to make this happen, because it's extremely important now, and obviously in the foreseeable future with everything that's happening in Inglewood. Oh, this is just a quick map of, of trauma, just so you have an idea. So, obviously Sentinel is in the middle of the red circle. All the trauma centers are around it. So, the closest we have in Inglewood, obviously to the south, is UCLA Harbor and St. Francis to the east. But most of the patients, honestly, they'll go up to UCLA or Cedars, and you know, in, in a rush hour traffic situation, or just every day, it's, that is a long way to go, so we're extremely hopeful we can move this forward. How much time do we have? You know? How much time we have?
Five more minutes.
Five more minutes. I'll go through this quickly. We wanted to give you an idea, there's, in the last six years or so, where the hospital is invested over $133 million on seismic retrofitting and other upgrades in the hospital, so I wanted to kind of go through those with you quickly. This is our emergency department. We have a brand-new unit, we added 10,000 additional square feet, like Ed said, our, I think the fifth or sixth phase of the project should be done in 2020. We'll have a total of 52 beds upon completion. We have a new patient entrance on Myrtle Avenue and a separate EMS drop-off that was added. This is another thing that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of. This map here, the green indicates, this is Sentinel's catchment area that's defined by L.A. County EMS. So, what that means is, regardless of where you are, if there's a 911 emergency that's called, you will be coming to the hospital within that area. This, this is just defined by L.A. County EMS. Now, there are some exceptions, like Ed said. Because we are not a STEMI-receiving center, if a heart attack is diagnosed in the field, you, you won't be coming to the hospital. If there's a trauma incident in our community, you will not be coming to Sentinel Hospital. But everything else, 911 calls or from that green area are coming to Sentinel. We have one of the largest catchment areas in L.A. County. The Tommy Lasorda Heart Institute has, has been kind of our staple through, throughout the years. We have inpatient and outpatient care 24/7. We have a number of board-certified cardiologists there to support you in different disciplines, in general cardiology, in EP, thoracic and vascular surgery. And like, like I said earlier, we have a new hybrid cath lab, I guess I didn't fix that, was supposed to be open in October, but looks like it'll be another couple of months. And we're looking to become recertified as a STEMI-receiving center. This is a picture of one of our new birthing suites in the OB unit that opened in December 2018. So, we consolidated all of our OB services into one floor, and we're very proud of the fact that we will be able to, we are offering family-centered maternity care by having birthing suites where you can labor, deliver, and then also recover in the same room. And that's just a picture of one of, of one of the rooms there. It's on our eighth floor, we call it our penthouse suite. It's on the east side, so you can see the stadium and everything that's, that's, that's going on in the community. We also have a Level 2 NICU that's on the second floor, it's a nine-bed NICU, just in case there's any newborn emergencies, they can be taken care of in our NICU. Here's our robotics, this is a picture of our team, from our robotic surgery team. Well, we're very proud that we just celebrated the 100th case at the hospital, and the program has only been up and running for about a year and some change, so we're very excited about the developments there. I mentioned that we have an acute rehab unit and outpatient rehab services at the hospital. That's a picture of our outpatient rehab area. Primary Stroke Center, Ed's baby. We were designated in 2017. We're looking to, we're having, was it recertification?
We're having recertification on Friday, but also, we're hoping to become a thrombectomy-ready center. You know what that means? Because the, one of the things that cause clot is, or causes strokes, sorry, is a little clot, and it blocks off oxygen flow to your brain. We have come so far in technology and healthcare, that we can take that clot out, throw it away, and tell you, take up your bed and walk and go home, all right? That's how we've come, how far we've come in healthcare. And we are hoping to institute that next year at Sentinel Hospital, so you don't have to go anywhere else. When you come in, and if you come in within 24 hours of your stroke, we can restore you to good health. I promise.
You heard it there. You heard it. We, we're proud of our critical care services. Currently, we have, we have 12 beds in the cardiovascular intensive care unit, we have 19, what we call MICU, medical intensive care unit beds, 29 just general ICU beds, and then obviously I mentioned the NICU in the previous slide. And ancillary non-clinical services, we have an extensive imaging department and clinical lab, which is brand-new. We have a new pharmacy opening in October, it's an inpatient pharmacy, so it's just to service the patients in the hospital. Respiratory therapy, social services, and I'm just giving a shout-out to all my, to all the case managers and social services workers in the hospital. The things that they do behind the scenes to place patients, especially our homeless patients, is amazing. And I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time. We're here to answer your questions. We're here to answer your questions.
So as I shared with you before, the theme, expanding our progress. And the first thing I want to hear you say in the audience, "I'm gonna change my diet." We will take some questions and answers before we take the next one. Please raise your hand, and when we ask for you to stand, so we can take it. If you'll please stand. Young lady, gentleman. Okay. Thank you, so we can get the camera on you. Thank you.
You want to hold it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that information regarding Sentinel Hospital. As a member of this community, I really appreciate it, because I had my ideas and thoughts and experiences with Sentinel Hospital, based on my parents. Both were patients at Sentinel Hospital. And it seems like the hospital has come a long way. One of the things that you said that I felt was very important, as I look at the community around me, and even considering my age, is that the trauma center, that you guys want to become a trauma center. So how do we, as a community, help support that initiative? Because you mentioned it, but it's like, how do you need our support? What do we need to do?
So let me, real fast, tell you. So we have a committee that involves members of the community. Right now, we only have four persons from the community who participate. We are inviting you to come. We'll take up to 10 of you. Come, come to our meetings, we'll talk about what's going on in the hospital, we'll talk about what's going on in the community, and what the hospital can do to help that. When you come, we'll tell you more of the pressure you can put on. Make phone calls, write letters, talk to your representatives, put some pressure on them to make this happen for you. If I, if I may, this is my community. I can go several other places and make a lot more money. I stay in Inglewood, I'm a Morningside grad, and this is my community. All right? So, my people, because I believe you deserve the absolute best.
Monarchs in the house. So, so let me just share with you, before we take another question or comment, I have met with Dr. Mohamed Nasser, who is actually the intern CEO and the COO, because we have that same vision of getting a trauma center right here in the city of Inglewood. Because I said on several boards, particularly the South Bay City Council of Government, I'm reaching out to 16 cities and two county representatives to be able to launch this as a critical need location. So, I want you to be made aware that we are behind the scenes, but we are working on it as we speak. Next question or comment, I saw right there, way back at the camera, can we get the mic? Coming right to you, just stand up, please.
Oh.
Stay, Willie, stay to your left, because we're trying to video. Your hat's being recorded. Thank you.
My name is Willie A. Inglewood, California. And I'm, I'm concerned about the veterans that live in Inglewood. I live, so the hospital to Long Beach Medical Center, Veteran Center. I'd like to know if I had a trauma, or got sick or something, would I be able to come to Sentinel Hospital and be served?
Anybody who gets sick and need help can come to Sentinel. Regardless of your insurance, regardless of who you are, we are required by law and by desire to serve you. Thank you for your service, by the way.
We'll take maybe one or two more questions, we need to move on. The gentleman here and the lady over there. Okay, thank you.
Glad to have you guys here. My name is Abdul. Question, you said about heart and stroke, et cetera, what about diabetic conditions?
So we, we treat, we teach, we help people to avoid and improve on anything within their health. So we just had Hispanic Heritage Day Saturday. We were out there, we had a booth, I was there, we were checking blood pressures, blood sugars, we were teaching about stroke, how to avoid stroke, how to reverse diabetes, by the way. A lot of people don't tell you that. You can reverse diabetes. My beautiful wife is sitting way back in the corner over there, she's a master herbalist. We travel the world, not just in the United States. We travel the world, teaching people how to reverse all kinds of diseases, and how to avoid getting them in the first place.
Your lady right there, and then I'm gonna let you finish up. Okay.
I'm Jean Barton, and I wanted to ask, you said you had increased the beds in the emergency rooms. What about the staff? And second question is, the trauma center, it would be at the hospital itself or at another facility?
So, the trauma center itself will be at the hospital. It's not gonna be anywhere else, it's be right there where we serve you. As far as staff goes, so by next year, there will be 1.5 million nurses short. That's not only in California, that's literally around the world. We don't have enough nurses. And those who have been in the business a long time, they're retiring, they're doing other things. Nursing has expanded, it's no longer just taking care of bedside folks. Thanks to the Affordable Care Act, if I may throw that in there, we have expanded how we do healthcare. We no longer treat the person lying in the bed, we treat that person, that family, that community. As a result, nursing responsibilities have extended. So hiring nurses is a challenge. We are hiring nurses. We're one of the few hospitals, literally in California, that will hire new graduate nurses. Why do we do that? Because you're fresh out of school, you know the stuff, you just learned the stuff. You didn't develop any bad habit. It's easy to take good clay and make something out of it. When the clay is too hard, it's hard to reshape it. So we will gladly hire brand-new nurses. You know new nurses, you have students in school, in high school, you direct them, El Camino, Southwest, they have great nursing programs. We want nurses, and we want nurses from this community. We want our nurses to look like the people we serve. So send them our way, we'll hire them, tell them Ed said so. I'll give you my phone number, if that's okay. Call my office anytime, leave me a message if I'm not there. You come by, we'll give you a tour, come join our committees.
I just want to add, I just want to add one last thing, just to try and, and also address one of the points that you brought up. Please know that any comments that come into the hospital, that we see online, that we see on Eye on Inglewood, we read them, we hear you, we internalize it, it goes up straight up to our C-suite. And if there, you know, we do have to investigate issues that come up, just to see, you know, what really happened in a certain situation. Ed is actively involved in a lot of those investigations, and we do take action. And it's something that we're taking very seriously, because customer service is, is a huge initiative hospital-wide, without having to go into all of the Medicare measures. We, our, our reimbursements are direct, from Medicare are directly tied to these scores. We take it very seriously. So, so we know that there's some challenges on, on our patient experience side, and just, you know, we can come and periodically give councilmen and you all some updates on kind of where we are in terms of our scores, but just know that we are actively addressing it internally.
Can I say one last thing? If you come to Sentinel, and you are not treated like VIP, call that number I gave you. I will make sure you're treated like VIP. I promise you.
Repeat it real slow. We're gonna repeat it real slow. Got it? One last comment, and then we need to move on to our next presenter. Please stand, thank you.
Hi, my name's Maxine Toler, and I understand that there is some stroke response vehicles that are in the area, and I was just wondering if any of them service Sentinel Hospital.
So because we were a primary stroke center, not a comprehensive stroke center, thrombectomy that I talked about is coming next year. We have agreements with hospitals, UCLA, Glenel Advenus, all the way over there, Little Company of Mary, Long Beach. And so if you come in on time, you gotta get there within six hours, right? 24 hours for the thrombectomy. Within six hours, we can use a drug called Alteplace, and we can reverse that with the drug, it's magic. I've seen miracles. I don't have enough time to tell you the stories. But those ambulances are there, so that if we need to send you somewhere else, we can call them, and they can be there within 30 minutes or less, so that we can get you out on time. The quicker we can intervene, the more function will remain. You will be able to return to normal a lot quicker. All right?
Okay, you're enjoying this, are you? All right, let's give my hand, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Molly and Edley, thank you very much. So continuing with the same theme, again, expanding on our progress, we also now have to raise an issue about, we're talking about public safety, we're talking about hospitals, et cetera, but we also need to make sure that we're prepared to handle possible terrorist acts, possible issues that we're not expecting that could actually happen, and we need to beef up our law enforcement. So, also, you have asked me many times about certain issues involving at your home, on your block, in your block club, or in the community. So rather than me guessing, there's nothing like having the, the best of the best. So please help me recognize Captain Ed Ryden's Jr. of Patrol Bureau, and Captain Mark Freed of Detective Bureau of the Inglewood Police Department. Please come on, gentlemen.
Why don't we start with the, let's start with a mobile app. Who has a smartphone in the room? Yeah, everybody. Who's using a flip phone? Come on. I give you credit for putting your hand up. We're not gonna hold it against you. So you can, you can call, but that's it, right? You can get calls and take calls? Yeah, okay. You know, this thing is the curse, isn't it? I spend my time, the, the city requires me to have this, so I, I'm, I'm always tethered to it. But it is a wonderful tool. And to that end, the Inglewood Police Department has a mobile app. I, I'm gonna go through it and brief you just a little bit, in a second, I'll just tell you a little about what I do. I'm in a suit, because I, I'm the commanding officer of the Detective Bureau, so all the detectives in the police department work for me, except for the narcotics detectives. They work in a, a special area, they don't answer to me, but detectives that work homicide, robbery, burglaries, special victims, missing persons, they all, burglary, they all work for me. And that's why I'm in a suit. And of course, Captain Ryden's is in charge of Patrol Bureau, everybody in a uniform works for him. So when detective, if you report a crime, and a detective calls for follow-up, those people answer to me. So, listen, I love to hear the good mostly, but I'll take the bad, if you have some bad. We, I like to hear feedback either way, so we can improve, right? Because we recruit from the human race, and sometimes we make mistakes, but I'll get my people squared away. So I'll, I'll be afterwards, if you want to talk, I'll be here. Okay? The app. So we spent a good deal of money on this, we felt like we weren't connecting with the public like we wanted to, so the department worked with Logic IT, they're a tech company up north, to create this app. So after or during, well, not while I'm talking, but when somebody else is talking, if you could download this app, I'd really appreciate it, okay? You're gonna get a lot of information. Now, you can ignore it, if you want, but as an example, the good folks from Sentinel Hospital that were talking about that crash at Manchester and Van Ness. So this morning, I put out that we were involved in a, oh, thank you, sir. We were, that we were, I'm, I'm bringing the app up on my phone here. And it shows that we were, that there was a police activity at Van Ness and Manchester. We warned you to stay away, that expect delays. So if you had this, you would've got a push notification from us on your smartphone before you drove in that area, telling you what was going on. Now, I sent that message because, as a command officer, I got a phone call saying, "Hey, this is going on." I knew the radio cars were out there dealing with that, and I got a message. So I pushed that out to everybody that has our, our app. So to hope, to make sure that you knew to stay away, so you didn't get caught in that traffic. And we sent all kinds of information out. So I'll, I'll go through it on that. He expects me to know, you expect me to know how to work this? Okay, I'm gonna hit these buttons until something happens. There we go. So Android, Google Play Store, and the iPhone, the Apple Store. Now, I have one of both of these, the city gives me a wonderful iPhone, but I have a, in my personal life, I have an Android phone, so I have to download it from both places. It looks the same, just enter in the search, it'll come up, Inglewood PD, and you just download it, okay? Trust it. Now, when you get, when you get going on it, I'm gonna just walk over here, can you hear me? Okay, good.
We can't get you on the mic.
Oh, okay. We're recording. Thank you. So I'm not gonna go too far. I'm not gonna fall. If you notice, in the upper-left-hand corner, it says, "Alert users when the new content has been added." So if you open it up, it'll pop up and let you know how many messages you have. Got it? Okay, right there. Customize the app, so when you go through, when you download it, you can experiment with it, it's got some settings in there, something might be, maybe make it a little bigger, to personalize it. We have the background image, that's City Hall, of course, that's what's up there right now. That's one of our newer Ford Explorer police cars, we do change that from time to time, so you'll see that change. And then down here's the toolbar. So you can call, if you click on that, it'll, 24-hour call, it'll collect you right to where you need to be. Now, you know, in an emergency, you call 911. But if you have a, if you're reporting some other issue, or you want to call Communications and, to the non-emergency line, it'll click right on, you don't have to remember the number, you just click on there, it'll take you right there. And then, of course, if you want to join the Inglewood Police Department, you have somebody that wants to join the police department, if you click on that, there's all kinds of information about recruitment. The divisions, I'll explain that in a minute, and then submit a tip. Okay, so recruitment. As an example, if you click on "Join Our Team," users can receive information about joining IPD, as well as other employment opportunities in the city. It explains everything on there, it's self-explanatory, kind of neat, it tells you what you need for the physical agility, where we're giving the test out, and, and what you need to pass. And this is for your friends and family that might be interested in this. A little bit about the police department, this explains the Detective Bureau, that's my operation, Captain Ryden's Patrol Bureau, there's another captain that runs Administrative Services, Deputy Chief is over the Support Services. Bureau just explains what we do, the units that are under there, just gives you an overview of how we, how the police department runs. It's just the basics. Submitting a tip. So if you submit, if you, let me do one more thing. So if you, if you click on that, it'll give you fields to enter information. Now, please don't report crimes in progress, some people make that mistake. If you watching a crime in progress, call 911. Now, I know, folks laugh at me, but you would be surprised what we get on that app. Please, I love the app, but it's not monitored 24 hours a day. So if you see a burglary in progress, call 911, we want to come out and catch them. So you click on "Submit a Tip," and the tip hotline, and it warns you, again, it's not an emergency, or I mean, if it's an emergency, call 911. Okay. Choose "Send a Message or Call," and look, when you send a digital message, it goes to multiple people. So we receive it, and we reply back. If you, if you leave your information, we reply back. Some people do it anonymously, and that's fine, but if you want to reply back, we'll give you a reply back. And then, of course, like I said, anonymous, we like your, we don't turn this over, information over to anybody. So if you give us your name and your phone number, we'll respond back to you. And then, of course, you could say anonymous, if you want. And if you see, like, if you have a, if you see some activity that you want to take a picture of, take a picture and then attach it, so we can have it. And it'll upload right there, right from the app. And then, of course, you can toggle on and off between, if you want to, and then click "Submit" when you're done. Okay, notifications. If you download the app on your phone, and when we send out new information, it pops right up there and lets you know, that you've got new information. And so that was one on 827, and then I sent out a new one today, but we had a, we had an aggravated assault up in, on Seventh Avenue, Eightieth Street, and we wanted the neighbors to go look at their video cam, their Ring doorbells and their video, to see if they saw anything suspicious. Some of them, we thought the suspect may had run, have fled the scene, and he may, we wanted to see if anybody captured it. So we sent it out, to see if, if any of the neighbors could just sort of, you know, review their video and see if they had anything of interest for us. It's a good way for us to communicate with you, and for you to communicate with us. Bulletins, when people are missing, or we're looking to update people, or we're attempting to ID suspects wanted in crimes, we put out bulletins. And those come right to you. You can look at them, and you, and you have a whole history there. And when we, when we find them, or we have an updated bit of information, we send that to you as well. And then we just have some photos up there, as you can see, and we change those all the time, and we add to them. And there's some forums up there, if you want to extra patrol, homeless encampment you want to report, or you think the police officers did a good job, you can put that up there, too. And we get that, and you don't have to call, you can just send it right on your phone.[1719.01] And we get that, and you don't have to call, you can just send it right on your phone. And then, we have some other options, in case you're interested in. We have a calendar, so when we have things going on, we put it in the calendar. If you, uh, if you need directions to the police department, or you want to give people directions, and then there's links, what to do, how, if there's somebody in jail you need to talk to, crime prevention, crime statistics, it's all there on the app for you. It's a one-stop stop, you don't have to go anyplace else. And then, of course, our social media platforms. I'm not much on social media, but there's a lot of folks that are. Uh, we like the app for the police department, uh, and I don't know how much of you use social media, but I'm sure your, uh, uh, your kids and grandkids do, they use it all the time. Download it now, or when I'm done, I should say. Okay. Uh, can you bring my other one up? Yeah, I have another, uh, why don't you bring up the, uh, let's bring up the crime statistics map. So, what I'm going to put up here is some crime statistics. Um, I put this together the other day. Uh, this is, uh, about as up-to-date, uh, I don't have what's gone on the last 24 hours, but this is, uh, as up-to-date as it gets. Uh, yeah, it should say crime statistics comparison. Yeah, yeah. And when I get done talking, uh, Captain Ridens will say something, and then we'll answer questions for you, okay? So, to look at some statistics, um, uh, this is, uh, Council District Four, so I pulled these and compared them, uh, and so what I've done is compared the, to year-to-date from 2018, so this time last year compared to this time this year, okay? So, we're down in homicides, uh, we're down in, in, uh, uh, sexual assault cases. Now, we're up in robbery, I'll go back to that in a minute. We're down in aggravated assaults, we're down in burglaries, that, that's residential burglaries, that's where you live, 25%. That's a, a significant number, we're proud of that number. Down 12% in theft overall. We're up in auto theft, that's a consistent, uh, that's a consistent pattern across the state with auto theft. And, uh, overall, we're down 5% year-to-date, um, up to the robberies for a minute. Almost exclusively, the increase in robberies is due to the phenomenon of internet theft. And by internet theft, I mean, um, uh, where you, uh, usually sales, where you agree to meet people online and sell, or offer to sell items, and then become the victim of a robbery. And most of those in Council District Four, I would say, I read most of those crime reports, and I have briefings on that on a weekly basis, more than 90% are people that don't live in, necessarily live in Council District Four, but are meeting people there, and I don't even know that the suspects are, live in Inglewood. They just meet on, uh, certain locations, and then victimize people. Could you bring up my, uh, next PowerPoint, which is, close it down for a second, and that segues into, uh, into how you prevent, uh, being the victim of a crime, uh, when you do a, uh, an exchange on the internet. It's a, it's a super, super dangerous thing, you have to be very, very careful when you agree to sell or meet people on the internet that you don't know. So, um, ways to stay safe when you buy things online, or you agree to sell online. You go to the next one, sir? Or, I'll do. Yeah, there we go. Always meet in a public place, preferably designated meet-up spot. Now, the Inglewood Police Department is a designated meetup spot. We have signs and cameras, so you can meet 24 hours a day, uh, on the west side of the police building, and I'll show you an image, which has the camera and the sign, and you can meet in the lobby of the police station. So, if you feel like you need to, uh, uh, buy something at 2:00 in the morning, don't do it out on Crenshaw, do, do it on, do it at the police station. Please. We, I, I implore you, we, we can keep you safe there. When you agree to meet a stranger who you don't know at night, in a place that, um, you're unfamiliar with, in circumstances you're unfamiliar with, it is a recipe for disaster, and I would urge you to please, don't do that. And, and it's, I doubt, uh, a lot of folks in this room do that, but your kids and your grandkids do. It is common, look, I, I'm, I'm not a young man anymore, but I don't engage and sell things on the internet, it's just something I'm used to doing. But the, but the, the generation today, uh, the youthful generation today, they buy and sell on the internet, that's what they do. And so, urge them to go to the Inglewood Police Department to do that, if you're in Inglewood, and there's a lot of other meetup spots, but that's where we can guarantee safety. And there's recording, so it's always recorded, no matter what happens there. So, never meet at home, always meet during the day, avoid high-priced transactions. If somebody says, um, they have a lot of money, or they want you to bring a lot of money, tho, those should set off alarm bells. Right? And bring it in cash, lady. Right? Don't do that. Uh, don't give your personal cellphone number, email, leave your valuables at home, never purchase or sell illegal goods. Now, I know that seems like a silly thing, right? But if, if you, if someone agrees, someone you love agrees to sell illegal items on the internet, first of all, um, folks that would trade in that activity are not afraid to cause you harm, and also, you reporting that makes it difficult, so it's an ideal situation for, for, for theft and crime. Uh, can you do the next slide for me, sir? Thank you. Okay. These are the pictures of the police department, that's the lobby of the Inglewood Police Department, meetup spot. See that? See the camera in the background? Also, there's a police officer sitting at the front desk. So, I, on the, on the west side of the police building, it's, there's a meetup spot, and it has a camera, too. So, again, Inglewood PD, if anybody wants to sell or exchange items, do it there, okay? That, we want to keep you safe, because the, I, we've analyzed the data of the robberies in, in, uh, Council District Four. The, that 53% increase is almost exclusively this type of crime. For not for that, we would be down in robberies. So, we're doing everything we can to stop that, but it's difficult for us to pre, to prevent that. Folks are randomly deciding to meet at places we have no idea where to go. So, there's, very difficult for us to interdict that. We have different, and Captain Ridens could talk a little bit about that, we have different ways that we deal with crime, crime patterns, but when it's random, when the suspect and victim decide to meet at a place we don't know about in advance, it's very, at a time we don't know anything about, it becomes very difficult for us. Because when you analyze, these crimes are happening all over the place, at all different times. But there, the, the fact is, they're meeting on the internet anonymously. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Ridens, and, uh, then we can answer some questions when you go down.
You see why I let Captain Freed go first, right? It's nice to see Sentinel Hospital here. Made me feel bad, because I was about ready to grab a cookie back there, and I decided not to. And we were both looking at each other like, yeah, let's not do this right now. But I know something Councilman Franklin discussed about, you know, some of the, uh, as part of our partnership with the stakeholders, as well as Sentinel Hospital, reaching out, working with the active shooter drills, the scenarios, and the training that we provided over there, it's a good partnership, and you could be well-informed that Sentinel Hospital is working with the police department and vice versa. So, we appreciate that. Before I get, piggyback on some of these stats, I'd like to, uh, say, thank you Senator Bradford for being here, brought some of our, uh, Inglewood's finest back there, Lieutenant Cardell Hurt. My executive, uh, Officer Patrol Sergeant Meeks. Our Sergeant of our anti-crime team, our Special Enforcement Bureau, is Sergeant Marvin And two of our finest that are on the street every night for you, right in your area, um, handling patrol, Officer O'Neal, Officer Ravick. You know, you look at the stats, you see the, uh, the violent crime stats are down significantly. I may know, I may know that, that may not be the, feel that way sometimes, but, uh, we're focusing a lot of efforts on addressing the violent crime, and we've done a pretty good job on that. However, we still got work to do when it comes to a lot of the quality of life stuff. Uh, we discussed the app, um, but for those of you that don't, that still have the flip phones, call in our non-emergency line 8771, works just as fine, we will send, uh, officers over there. Has anybody in here used the, um, the link on the internet where you send out an email request, and one of our officers actually responded back to you? Has anybody tried that? You like it? Does it work? Yeah. So, there's also, um, yeah, on the internet, associated with our website, an officer will make direct contact with you via email, let you know what's going on, if it's a vacation request, if it's anything that's in the area, but we had that personal touch, part of that, uh, building with the community, you know, the, you know, over the years, um, you know, we've really tried to re-engage and build that. I see a lot of familiar faces in here, and I appreciate, uh, you having my back. Those are some of the things that we're working on. We will be around for questions, our entire staff here to answer questions. I also brought, like last time, uh, some of the post-it boards, so for specific areas, whether it's traffic, violent crime, narcotics, or some issues, please feel free to write down on a post-it, we'll provide those for you, put it on there, we'll make personal contact with you, and try to address the issue or concern you're having, particularly in the quality of life, uh, area. Um, I think that's it for the, he chewed up all the 15 minutes, I'm out. But we'll stay around through the duration and answer any and all questions.
Okay, but let, let's take, um, a few questions or comments now. Okay, give my hand, thank you, thank you. Let's take a few questions or comments now, and then we will, uh, as you said, the officers will stay until after the meeting, and then you can reconvene and have your discussion there. I see your hand right here, can we get a mic? Please stand, please. Thank you. He holds the mic.
That's okay, I don't need a mic for that. I'd like to know what is being done with the increasing problem we're having on Imperial Highway, and thank you very much for improving Imperial Highway, because the traffic is wonderful now. That's great. But the prostitution is still going on at an exorbitant amount. Can we get something done about that, please?
Duly noted. Anybody else? Okay, a couple more ladies over here, can we get a mics? I thought Jean took, got them stopped. Right here.
Uh, yes, I would like to know if we're going to do anything about the trash that is being accumulated by the freeways and stuff, the on-ramps, it's terrible.
So, that is something we'll deal with, with Public Works and Code Enforcement, but not Law Enforcement. Now, if it was the homeless encampments that you may see off of, uh, the 405 freeway near Florence and, um, La Cienega, that's different, because we work with Caltrans, as well as the City of Los Angeles, plus the, uh, officers here, in order to handle that. But as far as trash, that's a different department. Okay. There was one lady in the back?
I had a question, my boy said that I'm very paranoid, but I'm very nervous about giving information out to people, and recently, I've had to call several people about, come and give me estimates to do work, and they always want you to text them your address and your, well, they get the phone number when you text them and all, so how safe is it to? I mean, you got to give them your address to come to your home anyway, but then they have it recorded on this information.
Yeah, if you're reaching out to somebody, ma'am, it's probably safe. Uh, you, you just have to be cautious who's showing up, what the expectation is. If they come knock on the door, don't just open it right away, make sure you know who you're dealing with. And go with a reputable company, right? But, yeah, generally, if you reach out to somebody, generally where it becomes unsafe is when people reach out to you unsolicited. You have to be real careful, there's a lot of scamsters out there that reach out to you. If you get phone calls, I spend a lot of time blocking numbers at home, I know we get a lot of, uh, what is, I forgot the name of the calls. Thank you, robocalls. But I get, if you answer the phone, uh, and, I buy a phone, I have a, I'm another guy with a landline, right? I do have a landline, I don't. So, I mean, it's a voice-over IP line, but it's not a cellphone, it's a separate phone number. What I do is I bought a pretty decent phone that has blocking capability on it, so I can block like 150 numbers on it, so you have to buy one of those portable phones that has a, a block feature. And when they call, and, and you pick up, and, and you answer, and you say hello, and they don't immediately start talking, hit block. And you'll find that if you buy a decent phone, they're inexpensive, 40, 50 bucks at Costco, or, uh, Walmart, or Target, and you block that number, your, your, your robocalls and unsolicited calls will drop. Yeah, don't give them any time. If they're, because it's a robocall, it's somebody on a computer dialing through, and then they're waiting for somebody to pick up. So, if you give it one or two seconds, and they don't answer, click off, block them. I'm sorry.
All right, so the officer said that they will stay until the very end, so if you want to see them afterwards, they would more than happy to address any other questions and concerns you may have. Let's give my hand, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, before I bring up my next presenter, um, there was a, a resident, yes? Please do that afterwards now.
If anyone asks a question about prostitution on Inglewood Avenue, looking at the area, we need to bring their plans back.
So, did you want to expand on that, Captain Ed Ridens? The question was, for the record, the question was, issues involving prostitution on Imperial
We're very well aware of the prostitution issues. We're aware of the prostitution issues on Imperial. I can tell you this, without giving away a lot of trade secrets, we do, do operations where we go online and try to hunt predators. I'm an advocate for trying to stop human trafficking, and this is part of human trafficking altogether. So, we're going to start putting some stuff up on our social sites that actually address that, but as far as us out there, we are out there. But here's the deal, you're not going to see them in this type of uniform to actually address prostitution. So, they are out there, they may not be out there when you're out there to just see that, but in order for us to do that, we arrest them initially, we find out if they're a victim of human trafficking, we treat them as victims, and then we're going after the, I don't even like to say pimps anymore, because they're not pimps, they're human traffickers, they shouldn't be doing this. So, we do address it, uh, it's just not prevalent in the open eye, but we do do it. And we do, we do these monthly.
Sometime, Ed can be modest. Ed, uh, Mr. Ridens, the Captain Ridens, uh, he has been very instrumental in working with me, particularly in our shopping centers, uh, particularly with, uh, shoplifting and, uh, break-in vehicles, et cetera, and he's beefed up his team, but like he said, you don't see them in uniform. They are unmarked vehicles, unmarked, uh, gentlemen and women to be able to address those concerns. So, I want to move on before I have the next presenter. I, I heard one of the residents talk about Imperial Highway. Did you, you enjoy Imperial Highway?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, also, there's another road that we had improved called Van S. So, we did, my district goes only from center to the north, to Imperial Highway on the south, on Van S, and then from Van S to Prairie is Imperial Highway. Ironically enough, in both streets has multiple agencies, and because there's multiple agencies, I can't always get Public Works of the City of Inglewood to be the lead assistant in order to run this. So, I want to bring up a gentleman that has been very instrumental, a man with power of authority of the City of Los Angeles, that said, "Councilman Franklin, I will work with you and your constituency, because when they hurt, he hurts." And he has raised the issue and says, "I want to make a difference, because I want to continue to improve the quality of life." Please help me recognize the Los Angeles City Council President, Mr. Herb Wesson for District 10. Come right up, say a few words. We may work together on public work behind the scenes to get the money, but it takes a leader such as Mr. Wesson, and I might have to work together to make this thing happen. So, if you say a few words. Thank you. Go for it.
Thank you, let's give your councilman a round of applause. You know, I, I, I'm here today because I just wanted to listen and learn and familiarize myself with concerns that you have. Did not come here expecting to speak, so I thank you for that opportunity. But let me just say this to each and every one of you, as I do represent your sister city to the north. This is one heck of a turnout, give yourselves a round of applause. I am very proud to be associated with people from this area, and Lord knows your, your, your council person and his colleagues. And you should be darn proud of the City of Inglewood, because you guys, believe it or not, are the talk of the country. When you look at, and I mean that, the talk of the country with all of the things that you have going on. And I think that that shows you have a council that works together, but more importantly, the reason why, Councilman, you're successful in your colleagues, is all you have to do is look out in this room and see the participation of the people from your district. Never forget this, the power doesn't lie with me, it doesn't lie with him, it is in your hands. And better governments, more efficient governments, are the ones where more people participate in. So, I am impressed with you. If I had a hat on, I would salute you, or take it off, or what have you. So if it's okay, thank you for recognizing me. I look forward, I look forward to working with you all in the future, working with this council. And I'm going to sit back down, listen and learn, and then take this back to LA and they go say, "Where did this boy learn this stuff? From Inglewood is where I learned it." God bless you all. Thank you for having me today.
Moving right along, and I want to keep up with our presenters and stay with my schedule. We talk about different developments occurring in the city, and they don't just happen. It took a lot of time, in fact, years for some time we ever actually get a retailer or billionaires that want to come to the City of Inglewood and invest in our city. So we have individuals that are also barometers that monitor what goes on in our cities, and we just don't want the same fast food discount stores. We want quality, family-style restaurants, hotels, et cetera. So we've set that platform, and we have a gentleman that's in charge of those departments to make this happen. Please help me recognize Christopher E. Jackson, Senior Director of Economic and Community Development Department of the City of Inglewood.
All right. Hello, Inglewood. Y'all look real good out there. I'm excited about seeing you. I'm always excited about every time the councilman asks me to come and share a little of the exciting things that are going on here in the City of Inglewood. Certainly excited about seeing all the great participation that's going on. I'm going to try and move briskly through this so we can get to some Q and As. Some of the stuff you saw, you know, the councilman just takes away my thunder. He got videos and all that kind of good stuff. I'm going to show you guys just slide by slide, and hopefully I'll be able to answer a few questions. As he said, I'm the Director of Economic and Community Development. I oversee pretty much the development services aspect of the city with planning, building and safety, code enforcement, and economic development. And we work together all as a team. Right now, some of my staff are in other parts of the city, working on projects that I think are going to make you proud, make you excited about being in Inglewood. So, let's start with the Grandaddy right now, right? Grandaddy is LA Stadium of Hollywood Park. You guys have seen the picture, really excited about SoFi coming onboard and providing a huge funding opportunity for Stan Kronke and his leadership team to continue on to develop that particular project. Oh, there it is. Thank you. The green one? Yeah, I want to make sure. Make sure it works. All right, good. Okay. Perfect. Yeah, there we go. Okay. If you've heard the news, really excited about the sponsorship that's coming on. What that means is it really means that we're starting to brand the city even greater than we did before. At the Hollywood Park, the first announcement of branding was not SoFi. That just recently came down. It was actually American Airlines for the Plaza area. Going to be absolutely phenomenal. They were here. They came out here, and we actually met them at the Hollywood Park Casino with the mayor and the council. And we were able to meet their president and talk about some of the plans that they have to be able to really provide even a greater destination experience than what we even anticipated. When you look at Synoplis, have you guys... We've been talking for some time about getting our movie theater here. And Synoplis, I was out in New York, and we met with them and sat down with them, and I was totally impressed with what they brought to the table in terms of high-quality movie experiences. So this is not your low-end budget, folk. This is reclining seats and folks coming to you to serve you and all that kind of good stuff. We've talked about upping our experience here in the City of Inglewood, and they certainly are capable of doing that and expanding across the globe. NFL Media, as you know, or you should know, they are in the process right now of developing a 500-square-foot building that's going to be occupied. About half of that will be NFL Media. They're going to have their studios there. They'll be filming there for Monday Night, Thursday Night Football when that occurs, and of course, Sunday Football as well. And we're really excited about them as a tenant. You can see that literally coming out of the ground now. If you drive down Prairie, you'll see that building is kind of coming out the ground in front of the stadium. That's the, that's our Class A office complex. It's going to be an extraordinary... If you want to see a little bit more in depth, I didn't go real deep, but we have all of the mockups of the building, both inside and outside. If you want to come to City Hall, come to the fourth floor, I'll certainly be able to show that to you. Three Weavers. Three Weavers has one of the first craft brewery companies that we had here in the City of Inglewood. They're now located in our industrial park area, but they're going to be expanding their brand, building a flagship store that's going to be their retail outlet. It's going to have, of course, the Craft Brewery Association along with the high-end kind of interaction that you would expect at the Hollywood Park project location. Olympus Fitness was announced as well, so the first major fitness brand that's coming there. They actually have their location in Long Beach right now. This will be expanding their location here in the City of Inglewood, and we're expecting that to take it to a whole nother level again, so. Our exclusive negotiating agreement with Murphy's Bowl, you know, you saw the videos. We're talking about all the things that are going on with the Clippers and the arena. Really has been exciting spending the last several months interacting with Steve Ballmer and all of the activity that's going on behind there. Just wanted to give you a quick bird's-eye overview of that particular project. It's about an 18,000 fixed-seat arena, 71,000 square feet of office for the LA Clippers, sports medicine clinic of about 25,000 square feet, has community space up to about 15,000. We're still finessing that area, and that's going to be part of our agreement with them in terms of city usage. We have commercial uses at about 48,000 square feet, an outdoor plaza that's going to be extraordinary. And you can actually see it there. It's actually, is the pointer work? Yeah. It's this plaza area right here. This street right here is Century. This is Prairie. And you're going to have this amazing plaza area that kind of is catty-corner to this intersection, along with the retail areas that's going to be alongside the plaza area that will be available to the public. Also, we're going to have our parking garage that'll be for VIPs and for the team personnel, another parking garage, about 3,100 spaces. And then we'll have an East Transportation and Hotel site. The roadway in, as you know, you've seen that, you've seen one of the hotels that's under construction, they're doing a remodel of it right now. If you've gone down Century, you see that. That's not the one we're talking about. It's the roadway that's next to the Church's Chicken. So churches, bye-bye. Roadway, bye-bye. And those will be demoed for the stadium location. And then right across from here, which is right across the street on Century, is where our East Transportation Hub, along with the hotel site, will be as well. So just a few glimpses of it on what it's going to look like. Again, this is the plaza area that I was talking about, the retail here. It's a very iconic architecture. We're going to have nothing but iconic buildings. We have the iconic Forum, we're having the iconic football stadium, and now the iconic basketball arena as well. We are in, we are in the process right now of finalizing the draft Environmental Impact Report, which we expect to be released shortly. Again, thankful, thanks to all of the wonderful participation we're having from Senator Brattford and his team helping us with AB 987 so that we can speed this thing along and deal with some of the things that we have to overcome. You know, we are kind of in the middle of litigation, so we're having fun stuff, disagreement with our neighbors, but we're figuring that all out. And thanks to the effort of Senator Brattford, we're getting further along, and we'll be able to move this into reality. Also, the Inglewood Market Gateway, you know, the D3 site which is across from City Hall? I've been here 10 years, and I've watched this vacant lot. It was one of the things I said I want to check off the box is before I leave, we're going to have a building there and people going in and out and all that kind of good stuff. Well, I didn't think it was going to take quite this long. But we are actually moving ahead briskly with this development. We hope to break ground on this by the end of the year. This is, this is amazing. It has 45,000 square feet of ground-floor retail, 241 residential units of which we're allocating a percentage of that for affordable housing, 585 parking spaces. But really, the key is it's going to really be the backbone to what's going on in our downtown area. We have the area, obviously, Hollywood Park, all the wonderful things that are going on there, but we want to make sure that our backyard is filled as well. You may have noticed that Hilltop is redoing the building at the corner of Regent and La Brea. We also have another project that's going to be coming online pretty soon right next door. So we're going to have a lot of wonderful restaurant experiences that we'll be able to deal with. My Economic Development Manager, Ms. Sharon Garrett, has been working very diligently to bring high-end restaurant experiences to the city. Daniel Freeman Hospital, you see, it's got the gates around it, and you know, hospital's gone, so we have one left. So make sure you patronize Centella Hospital. But this site is going to be developed with 226 townhomes, four-sale units. First phase of it is coming through Potte Homes, who's looking to complete the models by the end of 2019. You see those actually going up right now. And that's, that's a picture of actually the models there. Amazing. The quality is what I, what I know Inglewood deserves. The quality is amazing. The price is too, but... But, but, but the point, I'll, these are, these are some of the renderings. This one, Icon, Potte's doing two of the first parts of the phase. There's kind of two phases to it, with Potte doing two versions of it. Icon at Grace Park is three-to-four bedroom, 3.5 baths, a couple garage, a couple garage spaces in there as well. These are all individual units. They're nearby, close to each other, but they're all individual. So we have the Icon, I shared definitely, we have Parallel at Grace Park as well. Both these are Potte. And if I'm talking too loud, let me know. I'm a preacher, so I can... All right. All right. So we have Parallel at Grace Park. This one's in the upper 800s, not the 900s. I know you guys have made some difference. So, three bedroom, two and a half bath, and the ranges of the sizes are about anywhere, I think, 15, 1600 up to almost 3,000 square feet. So it's really healthy sizes. We were just talking about that. Y'all know our noise is going up. Congratulations. We have... I spent more time in Las Vegas with the councilman, working at, working with him, with trying to bring these quality institutions to Inglewood, for us to experience, and Norm is just one of them. If, yeah. Las Vegas, we weren't, we weren't, we weren't that. Listen, I know, sure. But International Conference of Shopping Centers has their big event up there every year, so we go down, and we try and find new venues, new opportunities, new places that we can actually bring to the city. We engage them, we follow up with them, and let me tell you, one, one thing that he taught me from the beginning, councilman showed me how to engage people who are interested in coming to Inglewood, and even people who are not, to tell the story. He's a great individual, being able to tell the story, and Norm is one of the ones that's an example, seeing that app. It should be open by the end, end of the year. They're moving extremely fast. I'm really excited about that. Obviously, they want to be able to catch that crowd that comes in during the shopping season. So, you know, you go over there, eat, and then go spend some money, right? Hilton True. You guys know about the Hilton True Project on 111th and Prairie, and they are in building plan check right now. So they're getting very close to having their project approved by the city for construction, at which time you'll start seeing the construction activity that's going to be going on there. And that'll be one of the first brands that you're going to see pop up in the city, and it's a Hilton brand. So that's pretty exciting as well. You guys remember this? Anybody, you District Four folks should remember this. Boy, I tell you, you guys bugged him, and he absolutely hawked over me. We got to do something. We have to do something. And we heard you over and over again. And let me tell you, my Code Enforcement Division spent countless hours, building and safety countless times out at this site, and what we're really excited about is it's under construction. So give me a hand. All right, so the next thing will be graffiti and something else and all that. Okay, fine. But I'm going to take one victory at a time. Councilman Wesson can certainly appreciate one victory at a time. And so, we're really excited about that because that corner has been in need of. And what you're beginning to see, if you haven't seen it, people are upgrading. They're upgrading their buildings, they're starting to take pride of ownership, and this is something that we have continually talked about over and over again. Thanks to the effort of Councilman Franklin, really, again, putting us to task. We have a moratorium on public storage that we are working on new legislation from the city standpoint to be able to deal with that particular issue. So we are really, really excited about being able to address that issue in the right. He was very concerned about what was happening in some of our key areas in his district with storage facilities. And so we were able to, with the help, of course, of the mayor and the council, be able to put a halt to that while we do the appropriate evaluation of it, and we should be seeing new regulations coming out on that pretty soon. The environmental justice general plan element is under, we're working on that right now. I have a draft on my desk that I'm reading through, which talks about policies for environmental justice and dealing with the issues that are going on in urban communities. We have our Caltrans Active Transportation Plan. How many of you bike out there? Anybody ride bikes? I rode my bike to work today, and when I get back to City Hall, I got to ride my bike home. Y'all know I live in Inglewood, right? Not too far. Not too far. So me and Eucalyptus are really good friends because that's where I go down Eucalyptus. But I like La Brea too because he repaved La Brea, so now that's a smooth ride. But we're talking about active transportation alternatives other than just using your vehicle. So we're trying to accentuate that. We're pushing heavily for bike lanes and different ways of being able to get around, making things walkable and accessible. You saw some of that rolled out with some of our schools and making sure that some of these kids have an opportunity to get some exercise, ride their bikes to their schools from short distances without being in harm's way. And then we have our TOD plans. We have two of those, Westchester Veterans and Crenshaw Imperial that we're working on right now, which basically, with all of our transit that's coming into the city, we're trying to make sure we capitalize on that and make sure that we have opportunities for housing, reduced requirement for parking in and around those transit areas. We want to see people use the transit that we're going to be implementing in the city. So I believe that I'm done with my presentation. Before I turn it over to the council, I really want to thank him for his leadership. Absolutely an amazing leader. You guys, you guys really are blessed. Really. Really. And he didn't pay me to say this, but you're really blessed with... He is genuinely interested in the lifeblood of your district, and not only just your district, but across, across the city, but especially, he is very emphatic about making sure that you guys are in good, good health. So we'll, we'll turn it over to the councilman right now.
So, before we take questions or comments, I just want you to be made aware of the things I do behind the scenes that he has elaborated just slightly. I want you to picture in your mind, we now have a facelift of the Forum by Madison Square Gardens. We're having a state-of-the-art stadium that is coming to the city, and then the state-of-the-art of an arena for basketball. Now picture this, an 80,000-square-foot, five-story storage building that wanted to come on Century Boulevard between them. Another 80,000-five-story storage building that wanted to come out at 102nd and Doty. Are they out of their minds? That is why you have to learn to count to three on the council, and we was able to get the moratorium to block that. Can you see the monstrosities being out there? Well, we're trying to have the state-of-the-art, a sports entertainment facility, and then we have to deal with storage spaces. So these are the kind of things that we deal with Chris Jackson's, no, they're not welcome. We're going to stop them. So, and same thing when it came to these fast food and discount stores, no, we're moving up now. Moving on up. So before we take questions or comment, I do want you to know also, Chris, that one of the residents did inquire about Chick-fil-A coming to Inglewood as well. So keep that in mind as you work a...
Work Chick-fil-A.
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 Chick-fil-A. Foul-A, foul-A, all right. You know what I'm talking about. All right, is our economic director. Stand up, Ms. Dunn, if you would, please, give the mic.
Councilman, and to all of our guests, I just wanted to say something, that all of the addresses, all of the people that have spoken tonight, you've been just wonderful. But I want all of you to do one special favor for me, and that is to honor our councilman, who is the driving force behind all of this. And I say this to him personally, and I hope he doesn't mind that I say this in front of all of you, but our councilman is just like a bulldog. When he takes on a bite, he doesn't give it up until it is completely done. And councilman, I just want to say, as a result of all of your efforts, all of these things are coming to fruition.
Well, first of all, first of all, I give honor to God. I'm a yielding vessel. Second of all, we have to have continuity on the council. And since 2011, since Mayor James C. Butts Jr. came and joined us, we've developed karma. We have harmony. So therefore, we're in a better position to move this city forward and to get the money that we need. And we've made some serious tough love decisions, but it's the council that made this happen because we have the vision of moving forward, and that's why we're called the Dream Team. We have a question or comment over there.
I echo, I echo your comments. That was just wonderful. I was just going to say the same thing. I'm so proud to be part of Inglewood. I live off of 111th Street, and I see the evidence that is coming up in regard to everything that's being built. But I wanted to say also that, is there any way that we can get a Trader Joe's or maybe even a... But I wanted to say also that, is there any way that we can get a Trader Joe's or maybe even a Whole Foods? I mean, we have this wonderful, uh, Centinella Hospital that is really looking for us to have healthy things and having a healthy lifestyle, but that would also help too, and I think we deserve it.
So we have been trying to get Trader Joe's for the last five or six years. They're, they're tough love, they're very sensitive and restrictive of what they want. We are still trying our best to get them to come in the development that we have on Florence and La Brea, but if they don't want to come, we can't, we can't do anything about it. We're hoping, however, that we do have a retail store, grocery store, that comes into the Hollywood Park Development, and that would be a nice one we'd like to have in as well. Any other question or comment? Please stand.
This, real quick, three questions. The first one, one of those phases... One of the phases at, um, Daniel Freeman, is that one of the KB, is that one of the KB projects that we heard about a couple days ago?
No, actually, there, there's two developers, uh, that will be developing that property. One is Potte Homes, and the other is KB. KB has not submitted their, uh, their project drawings yet, but they're gonna be similar, uh, modern designs that'll be included in that development.
And the second question is, are you considering moratoriums on dollar stores in the city?
Um, what, what we're discovering right now is the issue that we have with dollar stores are going away as, as leasing rates are increasing. Right? So, I believe that in the city of Inglewood, we have basically seen our, our last dollar store development. Uh, my, primarily because once, once the rates hit a certain way on a square-footage basis, then dollar stores are not attracted to those kind of locations. So the answer to your question about a moratorium on dollar stores, no.
Question, didn't I see a project that was coming online on Prairie, maybe like 200 apartments? It seems like I haven't heard anything about that. That's farther, uh, south on Prairie?
Prairie and Imperial?
Farther... What?
So, if you're talking about Imperial Highway, immediately across from the AM PM minimark, that's not Inglewood, that is Hawthorne. And in fact, since you brought that up, for those that, I mean, I live in Imperial Village. So those that live in Imperial Village, we had some challenges, even as they're developing, of wanting to use our residential city streets. So, and also, we were having challenges with the homeless that was going down the Dominguez Channel, coming over the fence. So if you go to, look at the pictures I have outside, you will see at 118th Street, just west of Yukon, in the cul-de-sac, you'll see that we have put in state-of-the-art, special fencing to restrict that from coming in. As of yester, as of this morning, we just finished the second one on 115th, because they, they had two apartment developments that was using it, coming on 115th. In fact, one of the developers had the nerve to put a, a, a rolling gate with a pedestrian door on it, so they could come out the door and park their vehicles on 115th Street, and then block our, our traffic, for we have a school right there and a church, and it was, and was not our congestion we needed to deal with. So as of today, that is now stopped, 'cause we have a new fence up there as well. Alright. Alright, last question or comment, please stand, young lady. Wait to the mic, get the mic.
Is there a plan for a sports bar in the, uh, development?
Yeah, and by the way, we have one, when you walk out, that big old screen right here. Right here at Hollywood Park Casino is a sports bar, right on the other side of this building. And if you haven't experienced that, you need to go over there and take a look at it, it's amazing. Looks small in the front, it opens up in the back, the screen's also on the back, and meeting rooms that you can actually book to be able to occupy. But to answer your question a greater, sports bars is gonna be everywhere. We're gonna have them across the city, yeah, we will. And they're gonna be, you'll, you'll be able to see the games in, in amazing, um, experiences across the city, which we're trying to make sure is available, so.
Okay, we need to move on, I'm gonna take this last question or comment, please stand. Ms. Lathan, please stand.
My name is Emma Lathery. And I guess, my thing is, everything sounds so good, and I'm happy to be a part of this, I've been in this area for 50 years, and I thank God for it. However, do you guys know that you are putting these buildings up, but nobody is monitoring the cleanliness of these buildings? You walk into these, wait a minute.
I can't hear you, nobody's what?
The cleanliness of the building, the floors. You go to these grocery stores, you go to the Dollar Tree, I don't even go to the Dollar Tree anymore, I go out. You, I talked to you about it, uh, Councilman Franklin, some time ago, but there is a need. We go in first class, and we want to stay in the area to shop in our area. We don't want to have to go out and shop for cleanliness. So, would you guys please work on that?
Yeah, and, and... And, and that, that's an excellent point. My, my economic development manager, I tasked her with going out and, and going to the grocery, one of, one of the things was Food for Last, Ralph's, all the grocery stores, taking pictures of the conditions of those, and we're actually communicating with their, we, we passed the regional, we're now at the corporate offices. So Food for Last, if you'll notice, they had holes in the floor and all that, you're starting to slowly see that stuff get fixed. We have communications going on with the president of, of Food for Last, who, by the way, owns Ralph's as well. And, and, um, communicating that with our expectations here in the city of Inglewood, no matter where in the city they are. But we do compare ourselves against neighboring cities to say, if those qualities can be in those other cities, it certainly needs to be here in Inglewood, and even better.
Alright, let's give it up, we need to move on, let's give it up for the economic director. Thank you very much. My, 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 are you guys having fun here? Am I bringing you good information? Are you taking good notes? But God, don't forget, it's my turn, you know, when I come, what do I say? Get your pens and paper, my time hasn't come yet, but get ready. We have one more person I want to bring in, because, again, with my theme I keep sharing with you over and over, what's the theme for our meeting? Expanding our progress. So we've talked about developments, we've talked about street improvements, we've talked about a variety of things in, in the city, but let's also talk about reducing the, uh, mission exhaust footprint. So the next person I'm bringing up is going to actually talk to us regarding trying to have employees that work at the airport to carpool or shuttle service from, as residents of the city of Inglewood. So please help me recognize Ms. Tanisha Johnson, who's the Transit Demand Management Coordinator. Please come right up.
Oh, councilman. Thank you, Councilman Franklin, my councilmember as well, I'm a resident of the fourth district. Um, my name is Tanisha Johnson, I am the Transportation Deputy to Mayor Butts, as well as the manager of the Inglewood Transportation Demand Management Team. And here I have Joseph Mar Fuentes, which is a senior program specialist that's working with me on this project. The city of Inglewood is fast-growing and becoming the center of South Bay jobs, sports entertainment, and retail, as Chris talked about. At this time, we're extending and committed to extending opportunities to the residents. And I'm here today to introduce the pilot shuttle program for the Inglewood residents who work at this, at LAX or tenants of the airport that live here in the city of Inglewood. If you know of anybody that live here in the city of Inglewood, please be so kind as to share that we are starting a pilot program that will shuttle Inglewood residents that work there for free. So what we are doing right now is developing and designing a program, but we are keeping you, the residents of Inglewood, in mind, but we want for you to go to the website here at the city of Inglewood and put in your information so that we can be able to see what areas are most, most needed, what you all need, so that we can better serve you. Whether it might be a shuttle-type program like bus, your regular bus route, uh, on-demand, um, type service like Uber and Lyft, but we need your information so that we can better be able to serve you. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Joseph Mar, so that he can explain a little more.
Thank you. So the, the short of this is, excuse me, is we want, uh, we're developing a unique program that's gonna directly connect residents of Inglewood who work at the airport to their jobs. Um, I'm sure you guys have been to the airports as passengers, maybe picking somebody up. There is a lot of frustration getting to the airport as a passenger or someone picking somebody up. Imagine working there, right? Imagine having to go there every single day to work, 40 hours a week plus. Um, so this is something that we're working on to create a solution for that. So even if you did work, let's say, uh, at a concession inside of the central terminal area, as someone who's driving, for example, to get to work, you have to pay $60 plus to park monthly in a lot. So you have to drive to that lot and then be shuttled in to the same traffic that everyone has to go through as passengers, right? So your eight-hour workday could go, could become actually 10, 11 hours because of the distances that are short, but you have to travel them through shuttles that are, that are provided by LAX. On the other hand, there are people who take transit, they go to the Green Line Station, and the same thing happens there. They have to get on a shuttle and go through the same amount of traffic. So our solution, our pilot program, that we're, we're working on right now to develop and taking in as much information as possible, because we want this to work. We, we don't want to create a program that is built to fail so that we then later on, years down the road, figure out what's wrong. We need it to work now, we need, and that's why we want the information from yourself, if you, if you work there, or if you know anybody who works at the airport. We really want it, you, go to the website, there's a little survey you can take there. Um, that information we will all take in, and we'll create these, uh, heat maps to decide what kinds of services are gonna be best for the employees. Um, we understand how difficult it is to keep a job at the airport. Uh, and they're, they're decent-paying jobs, you have benefits there, uh, depending on where you're working. But there are over 3,000 Inglewood residents that work at the airport. So there is a huge subset of the population that needs this kind of service, um, and we want to provide that. So we, at the very minimum, want to be able to take someone from a stop or their, front of their house and drop them off right where they need to get to work, they don't have to worry about paying any extra gas or any, um, parking or, or insurance on your car, putting miles on your car, all that stuff. That's all gonna be, hopefully, taken care of by something like this. Um, I, I want to be mindful of your time, I know councilman has to speak. Um, so please, if you have any questions, we will stay back, we will stay behind, we'll be available for your questions. Um, we'd love to hear some feedback as well from you. Thank you.
Thanks, councilman.
So I want to stress, any employee that works at the airport, not necessarily law, but any employee. So I don't care if you are a janitor, TSA worker, uh, working in concessionaires, it's all right there. So, we're now working on a 24, 24-hour shuttle service, but we need to find out if you have interest, if you are a employee that works at the Los Angeles World Airport. Okay, that now concludes all the presenters, and guess who's last? The councilman. So, as I always say, it's time to get out your pens and get ready to do your writing, because I deal where the rubber meets the road of actual projects and things going on specifically in our district and throughout the city. First of all, I want everyone to know that we are videotaping this broadcast, and that it will be eventually televised in the next couple of weeks on Inglewood Spectrum Cable Channel, and you'll be able to view it there on the city's website. Or, you can also go to our ICOP Center, is, is Aaron Elzy here? Aaron Elzy, please stand up, he's our police liaison. Aaron Elzy, he's our beat center, that's, that's the person that's right there at Imperial and Crenshaw. So that's where our police community center is located, and we call it the Beat Center. You can go there, 'cause we'll provide DVD copies of this town hall meeting, and it's available for free checkout. We want to make sure that your friends, family, and others know where it is. It's at 2640B West Imperial Highway. It's, he's there from Monday through Thursday, from 11 to 4, or you may call. Again, that's our District Four Community Center. Also, we have a, a master job list postings we do on a regular basis. If you're looking for full-time employment, part-time employment, uh, or, you know, friends that are in need, we, we create a, an email blast list for those that have that interest. Just see Ms. Matthews out front at the registration table, that you're interested to become part of it. Also, everyone should have received in your home the Operation Clean Sweep. Operation Clean Sweep is where you get to put out your bulk pickup, and we're gonna start this Saturday, September 28th, and it's gonna continue for the next five consecutive Saturdays. So you need to pick up the flyer, because you need to find out what will be picked up and what will not be picked up, and how, how large can they be, the weight, the length, et cetera. Uh, we also talked about, uh, some of the block club meetings I went to, issue was raised in two areas. One was Century and Fifth Avenue, think of where WS Shoe Stores is located, they look in Century Boulevard, Access Road, that there's a signal light there, right at Fifth Avenue and Century, and I, it was reported that it takes forever before the light to turn green and change. We did have some challenges, uh, we found out the signal timing had to be reset, and that has now been done. For those that live in the Renaissance, we had the same issue as you come out of Renaissance Way, at Pink A Drive, the light, again, was a problem, so that too was taken care of. Also, when I attended the block club, it's actually a block, it's called the, um... Century Heights Neighborhood Watch Association. And they had a street block club meeting. And one of the issues that they raised, that we were having a constant challenge of people running the stop sign at the intersection of 104th and 7th Avenue. As it stands now, my first step I've taken, you will now see painted on the asphalt, the word "stop." Immediately following that, when I get the budget, uh, put in, uh, there's gonna be a new flashing red light just above that stop sign, only on 104th Street. It's 'cause I don't want to distract too much of the residents, but clearly, we're gonna do that. And then following that, I'm gonna have Ca- Captain Ed Ridens and his patrol group monitor that area and give citation for those that run that stop sign, okay? Now I want to talk to you regarding, uh, capital improvement projects, what has been done and what we're gonna be doing. Because as of Tuesday, the city council just adopted the budget for the annual years of October 1st, 2019, to September 30th, 2020. But in our current year, we were successful on the construction improvements on Imperial Highway. That project, as you know, went from Van Ness Avenue on the east to Prairie Avenue on the west. We did road, roadway resurfacing, construction, new sidewalks, curbs and gutters and driveways, and that cost $3.6 million, but it is now done. The next project that I'm working with is the North LA, North La Brea Avenue Project, you've heard the economic director mention about. So we're doing construction improvements that is from just north of Florence to 64th Street on La Brea. Again, the same thing that we're, we're doing for Imperial Highway, we're doing for that project as well. For our projects that we did this recently, uh, in the budget, we are proud to announce that we did the Century Boulevard Frontage Road between 8th Avenue on the, on the west to 2nd Avenue on the east, so that's now been resurfaced. We also did a complete street repaving of a, from, on 108th Street, 109th Street, 110th Street, 111th Place, 112th Street, and 113th from Prairie Avenue on the west to Crenshaw Boulevard on the east. We also did a number of streets and alley improvements, particularly those that live in Imperial Village. We did on 116th Street, 117th Street, and 118th Street, from Cherry Avenue on the east to Corn Bloom Avenue on the west. Now, those are the projects we have done. Now let's talk about what we're going to be doing for District Four for the, for this time around. So I've already shared with you about the construction of Imperial Highway, well, now we're going north. So now we're working on this year's budget, I'm working on Imperial Highway on the south. I'm working on Imperial Highway on the south to Manchester Avenue on the north on Prairie Avenue. That's being done. I only have a couple of blocks that I need to improve on the ADA, because the curb cuts need to be done there. And that's another $4 million project that we're working on. We're also going to be working on a number of streets to finalize those that live on the access road of Imperial Highway. Think of Spinning on the east to Ardeth on the west. That is now going to be resurfaced. But we had to do Imperial Highway first. That's another $2 million project. We're also doing our... finalizing our Phase Two for the Century Boulevard. Again, that's again roadway reconstruction, signal and lighting modification, construction of new sidewalks, curbs and gutters, driveways, medians, and storm drains, again, on Century Boulevard. That is a $30 million project. Now, we're also going to be working on, in District Four, the Crenshaw Boulevard and 108th Medium. So, anybody knows where Winchell's Donut is? So, think of 108th and that T at Crenshaw. We currently have temporary ballards. They're little white cones. Well, eventually, we're now going to change those and make them permanent, because according to the Public Works Director and the police, that it is extremely difficult and highly dangerous of people wanting to make a left-hand turn to go northbound on Crenshaw, and we've had a number of fatalities in that area. So, that's being corrected. In addition, going on Crenshaw Boulevard and 113th. Everybody know where Brawley Hut is? I mentioned these little hometown things. If you've been around our city, our district, you'll know this. But from 112th all the way to Imperial Highway, that we had to take away the left-hand turn lane for you to enter into the shopping center that houses the Jack in the Box and the other stores there. Because, again, the Public Works Director determined that because people are trying to go across the intersection to get onto 113th, or people coming off 113th by Wells Fargo Bank to want to go north, that's where we have the fatalities. And already, between the end of last year and the first of this year, we replaced three fire hydrants in front of Wells Fargo for that same reason. So, there we have a temporary ballards there, that we're now going to extend the left-hand turn lane all the way back past, I'll say, north of 113th, and tie it in, so that way, we can extend the left-hand turn lane on going to Imperial Highway to go eastbound on Imperial Highway. So, you know that. Okay, there's been a number of issues brought by the residents and concerns because of all this economic development that has become a major challenge for us in order to say, "Gosh, I used to be able to see across the street, but now, all of a sudden, there's cars parked everywhere." And especially seeing like when there's some kind of event or conscious going on, all of a sudden, now people are parking in front of my house, and they get in another car and off they go. So, we're dealing with the Uber and Lifts, because people have wised up, coming in Imperial Village, Lock Haven, Inglewood Knolls, Century Heights, and say, "I'm going to park my car there. I'm going to call Uber and Lyft, pay them six bucks, instead of paying $25 to go into the foreign parking lot." So, think about what may happen when we now are going to have the stadium, and then comes the arena. So, for anyone that's interested, and it requires the unity of the block, owners, I want to stress owners, not tenants, but owners, that there's a permit parking petition or speed hump note information packets that you can get on the city's website, and it is www.cityofinglewood.org. And then you, when you go to the city's website, look on their Public Works Department, and then click on that, and then it'll open up, and then go to the Parking and Traffic Commission, if you want those documents. So, I just want to make sure you're available with that. Also, I mentioned, and we were glad to have Sentinel Hospital here, because we're concerned about, are we getting enough medical facilities for us to handle this growth? Be advised that a new medical office that is located on the 400 block of North Prairie Avenue is now in site plan in order to develop a new hospital, a medical facility, or medical office for that location. There's also a newly remodeled medical offices that has now opened. It's a cancer treatment medical office. It's located in the 2200 block of West Manchester Boulevard, so that is just west of Van Ness Avenue, and a new women's clinic located at the 400 block of West Manchester. Again, Manchester Boulevard, and it's near Inglewood Avenue. And they're all up and running now. I've sent out, those that get my email blast, who gets my email blast? Did you get in my email about Costco? Costco gas station has now closed for remodel from September 4th to November 3rd. And it's going to be similar to the business Costco that is near on Prairie, as well as the one that is all the way over on... off of Rosecrans and Gateway, yes. So, we're getting more pumps to be able to accommodate our needs. Also, I want to give a personal shout-out to how many people know about cannabis, recreational cannabis trying to come into our city, and we, as a council, have banned them completely. So, you can ban them, but now you've got to deal with the owners of property that says, "We want them, because they're good tenants." How many remember Jen's Liquor? Debbie's Cleaners? And the recent one is called the Laundromat, just off of Prairie and the 105 Freeway and 112th. So, these owners actually was opening them up, we close them up, another one comes in, we close them up, we take their items, et cetera, and they keep coming up. Well, I'm proud to announce, they're gone. They're gone to the point that with a special thanks, and the UCI officers there, Inglewood Police Department, code enforcement, and particularly Southern California Edison that shut off their power. That's what it takes. And that's what happened, because that triangle made a significant difference for those three. So, I'm just giving you a report, because I have been dealing with Jen's Liquor for nearly two and a half years, and now I can finally say, it's gone. For the illegal street vendors, they all are illegal. So, if you see anybody trying to sell food, cell phones, pop-up tents for mobile carts, or going down with a little shopping cart ringing a little bell, that's all illegal. I want you to help me by calling Code Enforcement Division at 310-412-5590. So, if you've got street vendors, and including the ice cream trucks, because we're not for certain if they're permitted. We have a number of bandits that try to come into our community. So, Code Enforcement works on that. So, 310-412-5590. Also, I've got to run out, I'm running out of time, so I've got to speak fast. There's a survey that is being provided by the Inglewood Parks Recreation Division. They want to hear from you as a citizen. We are now taking the survey, because we want to improve our parks, but we want to hear from you, what do you want? So, if you will take the time to do the survey, it was out on the information desk. You can leave it with us, you can leave it at our District Four office, you can bring it up there. You can bring it to the District Four ICOP Center, which is where Mr. Aaron Elzy is, or you can take it to the parks, any of the parks, and they will collect it. But we need for you to have it done no later than October the 14th, and it's critical. By the way, once we identify, or the Parks Department identifies the one that provided the most positive suggestion, that we're going to provide you a free Apple iPad Pro 12.9. And then, in interest of time, I'm going to conclude by just simply saying, we have only one park in District Four. What is the name of that park? Center Park. Where is it located? Yukon Avenue, between 111th Street and 111th Place. That is the only pocket park we have in District Four. And if you look outside, you'll see the new exercise equipment, the track that you can do for exercise, as well as the state-of-the-art playground equipment, et cetera. And I want you to know, we share that park with Worthington Elementary School, that also uses that park. During the daytime, we want it safe for the kids, so the park is closed during that period. But I'm sad to say, as of today, all the money we spent for that park, someone decided that they were going to damage and destroy the slide. We have two slides there for our kids, and now we had to close it off, that section, and have to order a brand-new slide, all because someone has damaged it to the point, they broke it, and you can't slide down it, because it's not safe, people get hurt. So, I've also... there's so many different flyers out there. If you didn't get the emergency numbers, and there's a special brochures regarding our Office of Emergency Management that talks about earthquake preparedness, particularly for seniors, and other information, it's out there, please get it. I'm going to conclude my meeting by simply saying, thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. And on that note, we can now turn off the recording, and we'll go into our next phase.